Okay, thumbs up.
Uh, Ben, I just want everybody.
Well, first of all, thanks.
I'm recording this as well, so just to be aware that I have to record it.
Perfect. Thank you, Jen, for doing that.
Thank you, Jen, for doing that.
Are you, I think you can call in, Cheryl, just mute your mic on the go-to meeting unless you can't hear anybody that well? I guess if maybe you have some questions, Cheryl, if you want to, are you able to type them into the side if you have questions or something like that? Are you okay? If we move forward then? Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and start here. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody for making the time to meet. I know we've had, there's been a lot going on, a lot of change, a lot of moving parts, a lot of newness. We've never met like this before, but appreciate everybody's ability to, to get together to meet, to address some questions and just make sure that everybody's up to date. We're all up to date with how the current crisis is affecting us locally and then more specifically from a finance committee, finance standpoint. So I know through the conversations that have happened, there's been a lot of internal conversations from, you know, Jim, Dana, the other directors about how they're approaching budgets, but just trying to put things out there to understand where we're at, what the latest projections put us at and, you know, how that is ultimately affecting, you know, the budget for 2020 that we passed, you know, about four months ago, five months ago at this point. So with that, we, we have the call, uh, call the order, the roll call, Chip, myself and Cheryl is here along with the, the rest of staff. And then Joey Robertson is our esteemed guest. Thanks for joining.
Thanks for having me.
So wanted to, we have some questions and a little bit of an agenda here to go through and understanding that a lot of it is, you know, curiosity probably may not have all the answers to all of the questions, but I think putting the curiosities out there to kind of give us something to, to work toward, to lean on to just to understand how these are going to shape some of the rest of the conversations that we have here in the near term and then really for the balance of the year, especially as we're going into planning for 2021. So with that, the agenda topics are listed there. I think we have some follow-up. I know I have some follow-up questions with maybe drilling down into some specifics for each of these. Obviously, Chip, if you have any, you know, questions or comments, feel free to chime in and then Cheryl, if you wanted to put any of your questions in the chat on the side, we'll be able to read those out and answer those. But at this point, Dana, I'll turn it over to you with going through through a couple of these here to start with. I think first up, you had sent out the Rita projections that we had received earlier this week, right?
Yeah, and I did receive an updated projection from my contact at Rita. She sent me an updated amount in the delay for individual estimated, individual estimated projections of, it used to be 404,000 and she's reduced that to 361,000. And she's also added a new estimated projected loss of 53,000 per individual tax. So these numbers, that brings our total loss up to about 170,000 and decreases our delay a little bit by about $50,000. So as far as the delay is concerned, I don't think that that's going to have much of an impact on us at all. We should still see those amounts come into our bank account in 2020. As far as a cash flow issue, I don't think that'll be a cash flow issue because we have pretty high reserves in our bank accounts that's sitting in cash in part. So I don't anticipate those delays being anything we should be concerned with. As far as the loss goes, she's projecting about, like I said, $170,000 in lost income tax for the year. I went ahead and budgeted in about a 20% loss for the rest of the year, which comes up to be about a decrease of 313,000. I know that's a little bit more aggressive than what Rita had projected, but I would rather err on the side of being conservative.
Absolutely.
So what you'll see in front, on the screen right here that Jim is sharing and what I've emailed out to everybody just prior to the meeting, this is my COVID-19 update for the 2020 projected available funds. And draw your attention to the top line. That's of course the general fund. We have anticipated revenues which have decreased from the previous sheet and I have, I also sent everyone the previous sheet, which is the second page. Yes, that's it, Jim, just for comparison so that you could see what we passed for budget versus what we're looking at now on the first page. I have projected a decrease, a loss of $313,000, which brings our total expected income tax down to 1,892,000 versus what we budgeted, which was 2,205,000. So this sheet here shows the general fund having a projected loss of $47,000 at the end of 2020. Now, just a couple of things to note, this, this loss includes all the appropriated amounts that we've appropriated in 2020 as well as an additional appropriation, which you'll see at the next council meeting for the HVAC unit and MP Dory for replacing the speed limit pole that was hit last year, that was replaced last year, but we finally got the bill for it. We've also, we've already received funds for those anyway, so it's an offset, but it wasn't appropriated. So you'll see that at the next council meeting. Anyway, those amounts are included in the appropriation number of 2.9 million. So I have the same, I'm sorry, go ahead, questions?
This, this is, uh, this snapshot that is in front of us is as is no changes to current spend, just taking what our revenues are at a projection based off of a further conservative estimate from what Rita had, had provided us, right?
That's correct. And on the second sheet, you'll notice the projected balance at the end of 2020 in the general fund was $171,000. And now I'm showing a, a negative balance of 48,000. And that's with the projected $313,000 decrease, but that's offset slightly because we're not transferring as much into CIP. Because our percentage of revenues, our, our revenues are down, therefore our percentage of transfer is also down. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's why you see the 47,000. Go ahead.
We had projected a nice carryover in that fund. I mean, so
Yeah.
Some availability for cushion there. All right.
Yeah, it's kind of helping to shoulder the burden there. Also, what I've done is I, I have the same amount being transferred to debt service because aside from what I'll talk about a little bit later from the OPWC and what they've done to help alleviate some of the burden, I have the same amount of money going into the debt service fund this year. The amount going into CIP is reduced because, as I mentioned before, the revenue is being reduced, therefore the transfer amount doesn't have to be that high since it's a percentage of revenue. I did also reduce the budgeted gasoline tax revenue by about 20%. So you'll see that show up in the second line under the general fund, fund number 2011, street maintenance. We're now showing a projected balance of $15,868 versus what we had previously was $71,000. So we're still in the black there, which is good, but not as nice as we were before. Those are the major differences that I've kind of ran through my projection on this sheet here. Um, I want to touch a little bit on OPWC. They have delayed, or I'm sorry, deferred all July 2020 loan payments. They are not accepting any loan payments for July 2020, so that will save our debt service general fund about $17,000 this year. So, and they're not like saying you have to catch up either in January 2021. They're just saying we'll push out your amortization schedule by another six months. So those loans are all pushed back. As far as water and sewer payments, as you all know, we're not allowed to do any shut offs. Some people have expressed concern that that might mean people won't pay for their water. Well, eventually we will be able to shut their water off. And since we're not, you know, giving any relief on water, then I think we'll still be able to collect that money that we're, that we may have lost out on. Also, with people staying home and not going to work, I think we'll see water usage increase. So therefore that would offset any loss of revenue from the water and sewer department if there's like business closures that wouldn't use as much water as they would have otherwise. I think that'll be offset by people staying at home and therefore.
Question, actualized receipts at this point? As in, are we seeing any difference in payment versus what's expected from a normal month?
Um, so far for, through March, I haven't noticed any decreases. Based on history or just based on what we're, we're expecting?
Normal. So we've only missed the first shut off and, you know, if we see any decrease in that, or excuse me, increase in that, it'll be over the next few months because those people that would normally be caught up by now did not pay. So the compound will start from this month forward. We really didn't expect too much this first month. We have noticed pumpage at the plant, we're, we're about 45 minutes to an hour longer than normal this time of year. And I do believe that is because people are home and if people are home, they're going to use water. So, and most of our factories are still on operation at this point. So we have seen a little production increase.
Okay. All right, good. Thanks, Jack.
So that's basically what I've come up with there. I'd love to answer any questions. I do have some other thoughts that, that I can walk through, but if you want to, if you want me to pause and, and talk about some other questions that you might have, we can do that or I can just move on to the revenues and expenditures through March.
I know for me, I, I appreciate the conservative snapshot to ensure that we're protecting ourselves against any additional unforeseen circumstances. Depending on how long these actions continue. So I, I think it, we were talking about it before, this $50,000 deficit projected feels better than what I had thought it was going to be coming in. At least for me, I to Jack's point, I think time will tell here over the next four weeks where we're looking from water and sewer, but I know we plan for that as well. So this, this with no changes in spending makes me feel better. I'd just be curious, I mean, we're going to have to take a whole new look when we model what 2021 is going to look like here. And that's coming up in another, another three, four months itself. So now I appreciate the due diligence and I appreciate the, the snapshot.
Okay.
Chip, Cheryl, you guys have anything?
No, I'm, I'm fine with, with Dana's projection. Um, the state did announce of the, the there's going to be from the workers comp fund, they're going to, including local government will get another passback of from, from previously paid premiums. They're going to deduct your bill for this year and then send you the, the surplus. Not sure what the amount will be, but they said they would try to get those out as soon as possible. The other issue that came up in the mayor's call yesterday was trying to get OPWC to come out with what, what they anticipate or make a decision regarding new projects that have been talked about and how if they're going to approve the funding so that the cities and towns can make their decisions about, about contract, writing the contracts for those. And the people from the governor's office, we're going to go back to check and see if they could do something about that. So.
And Dana, on the last governor's call last Friday, I believe they were projecting a 40% decrease in traffic volumes, which will translate to the lower gas tax receipts. So I, I think you said you had 20%, just keep in the back of your mind, the governor's anticipating 40, or that's at least where it's at today. So something to keep in mind as, as this thing progresses.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I only budgeted 20% reduction. I, that 20% though is budgeted for, is taken off of the entire 2020 amount. So that's probably more like a 25 to 30% reduction for when you're talking about just the remaining eight months of the year. Eight or nine months of the year. So, but um, yeah, that's good to keep in mind. I will definitely monitor that because even though we are still in the black there, we only have about $16,000.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks.
Jim, to that call out, thanks for calling that out. I'd forgotten that point. Is that 40% for this period of time or is that 40% for the balance of the year?
40% for this period of time. So yeah, it's, it's a drop in the last 30 days. But not January, not February.
All right.
Okay.
So obviously still in here, we have I'm trying to find it. Where is it? Budget stabilization? We still have 90,000 going into that fund?
Yes, we do. And that's something, that's kind of an, it, it's an obvious change. If we wanted to reduce that by 50,000, that would cover our projected deficit in the general fund.
Yeah, I think that's probably the path of least resistance when you look at services to provide areas to cut. Taking that number, pulling it down a little bit. I mean, the budget stabilization fund is, is there for that reason. So if it needs the backfill, I think, you know, obviously time will tell as it continues to actualize through the year if that's needed. But yeah, that's the first place I look.
Yeah, another maybe easy, maybe not so easy place to cut would be, we've budgeted $50,000 in design regs that we haven't spent any of this year. So Jim, this is more of a question for you. I don't know if that's something that you would consider eliminating or reducing.
We are signed under contract and Bailey's working with them. So right now, no, it would be a prorated amount if we had to stop the contract. But that project's underway. I don't, it, it's not as easy as moving the budget stabilization fund at this point.
Okay.
Dana, you could just refresh that budget stabilization fund. When do we, do we, that's usually one of the last items we do toward the end of the year. Is that correct?
Yes. And sometimes I forget to do it. So I won't forget this year.
But I mean, the point is, is that as it continues to actualize, it's not like that would move you know, in a percentage over, you know, 12 months as it comes in. That's something we do at the end of the year. So it's still an outlet. If it doesn't that way, I mean, we can naturally, you know, filter that into backfill wherever the gaps.
Absolutely. Well, I went ahead and went and put together the revenues and expenditures, the financial report for the end of March. And I have some notes on revenue and expenses. I'm more than happy to go through those. We can also talk about the bond. And I think that's pretty much all I had prepared to discuss. So what would you like to do next?
Uh, yeah, I think, Jim, if maybe you want to give an update, if this has been, you know, rebroadcast out there for others to, to view kind of your, if you have readily available your snapshot of the color coding for the budget status that we're in. Is that something that you posted out there?
Yeah, give me a second. So hopefully it will pop up. All right, give it one second.
There it is.
Yeah, so mainly just put this together. So I think we all can be on the same page. I, I believe we probably operate under the budget restraint category on a day-to-day basis, but you know, just to make sure all of our department directors and, and everybody on council knows that we're not going to be starting any new programs right now. We're not going to be, you know, implementing. I mean, I don't even know what you want to call it, but you know, just kind of a snapshot on where we are at this point. Again, I, I believe we do this on a day-to-day basis, but I, I want to make sure we're all on the same page at this point. So that's why I put it together and shipped it out to everybody the other day.
Perfect. Thank you for updating everybody on that. I guess with that, are there any other questions then for Dana on the first part here with the, the projections from Rita and kind of where we're projecting ourselves at this point? Uh, if not, I think probably the next item, let's see, village spending plan. I think we kind of touched on that with what Jim had provided. And then at this point, we're pretty much holding to what our current plan is, not implementing anything new. To Jim's point, we have some contracts that we've signed already that we're beholden to continue to execute from what I understand. Is that right, Jim? I think that's another topic we have coming up here about maybe what CIP projects we have, if some of the timelines maybe have shifted, we can get into that here. Another couple of points, but anything else from a village spending plan for the balance of 2020? So if not, then we can go into the bonding package. I know typically in a budgetary discussions, there's a lot that we do from a CIP, you know, projection, CIP project completion. And a lot of that is grant and zero interest loan partnership. And this year, you know, we opted to go toward a larger bonding package because of the interest rate that's available, that's even lower now than before. But I think there was a lot of curiosity as to kind of what the status is at the moment of that bonding package. And, you know, relative to our projection for the balance of the year, the comfortability of continuing to move forward with that as originally passed. So item number three, I guess, Dana.
Okay. So, and Joey's on the call too. So he is obviously very well versed in this, but I can give a brief overview and we can defer to Joey if you have questions. But we have, we've received approval for our bond insurance. So right now we, we're looking at still very favorable rates, probably maybe even lower than before, but I don't want to get anyone's hopes up because everything is still very volatile and changing daily. So the rates are still looking, looking very good though, which is good. And we've got approved for the bond insurance, so we will not need to go get a rating, which is great news. So as of right now, we're just finishing, finalizing up the preliminary official statement. And from my perspective, everything on, on our end is complete there. We're just waiting for the bond underwriter to do some updates and then it'll go out to pricing. Is that correct, Joey?
Yeah, you have it. That's correct. We did get a insurance from, insurance bid from BAM Insurance. It was 33 basis points on debt service. We had run the numbers at, you know, somewhere between 35 and 40. So it was right where we originally thought. The bond market starting mid-March was very liquid. I mean, there really wasn't any deals that happened after March 17th, but that has continued to evolve every day. I've been involved in a couple of deals that have been priced, not Ohio deals, but just across the, across the US and the market is, you know, freeing up every day. Dana is correct. Actually, the all inter-interests cost is less than what we had originally contemplated. The Fed announced in their bailout package, they were going to provide 500 billion to the municipal market to sort of free up liquidity. Most of it's related to funds, bond funds, that is, like most federal programs that are enacted, they haven't been real clear on how they're going to get that money in the market. You know, at some point in time, they were talking about providing that to dealers and brokers to basically provide liquidity. In other cases, they were going to apply that money to the market as a backstop. So if you were a bond fund and you bought a bond and you needed liquidity, they would actually purchase that bond, provide liquidity at a price that was higher or at least what you paid. So just the fact that they've announced that has really freed up the markets and there's been a lot of activity. So we actually structured up a deal today. I told Dana, I mean, we'll still keep talking in interest rate ranges, but the original deals that we ran were in the low 3% range for you. They're actually less than that, but I, I reminded Dana and I'll remind everybody that's on the call. You know, we don't want to get overly excited until we're able to, you know, price the bond issue, which we are essentially ready for. Really Dana and I both just need to look at the preliminary official statement and sign off on that and send it out, send it out to the printer. And we're really essentially ready to price. So we could possibly do that next week if everybody wants to, to move forward with it. If that's the consensus, or we could take next week and wait. I, I think probably each week, you know, maybe, maybe the market stays the same, maybe it gets better. But at some point in these very low interest rate environments, we need to just, you know, decide to move forward and do it if that's what we're going to do. Any, any questions on that?
Whether or not we can afford to pay back our debt. I don't think that's really a concern, at least not from my standpoint. I think that the help that the OPWC is giving with deferring out another six months, all their loans is helping get cash flow working for a lot of municipalities and us as well. So, and as far as the water and sewer, which is the bulk of all this money that we're bonding, I don't see any concern for, for non-payment. So I, I feel, I feel comfortable that we're, we're good to go and we can afford to pay back the proceeds on these.
Yeah. And the only thing I would want to add is in our discussions with the, with the insurance company, normally it's just a standardized process. We send it in, we answer a few questions. They actually sent back an additional list of questions and Dana did an excellent job of responding to those questions. They were principally centered around COVID and, you know, budgetary measures and actions that you would need to take. And so the insurance agency was very pleased with those answers and put forth even aggressive bids. So I, I mean, overall to date, everything's gone as planned. Other than obviously that two or three week market disruption we had and a little challenge to get the bond insurance, but we're all ready to go if everybody else is ready to go.
Ben, I had a comment about the Ohio EPA loan that we were seeking. I, I checked in with them on April 7th and I'll read verbatim what I was sent in an email. Basically my question was just procedure. I've, I've never done this before. So I was asking, you know, some pretty silly questions probably in their mind, but ultimately this is what he came back. He said, we He said, uh, we produce a list of projects each year, a draft in May and a final in late June based on nominations we get. Your project will be on that list. In early July, or maybe even sooner, Johnstown will be contacted to learn where you are in the process. So that was, uh, uh, there's a little bit more to it, but basically what I wanted to point out is that our project is going to be on that list. Uh, and that was a sub, sub-two rate, I think. Uh, it does change. Um, so that's just a consideration. I, I don't think it should alter any of our issuances that we're going to do now, but, um, you know, hopefully we can nab that funding source, uh, in early July, uh, when, uh, we're officially awarded the money.
Okay. Well, it's good to know that project is at least slated to continue to move forward.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. So with that understanding, um, and, uh, uh, Joey, real quick or Dana, when did you say we could look at if we continue along the, the current path that we are, when we could see placement for that bond? You say the next week?
Yeah. I mean, technically, I don't know what Dana's schedule is tomorrow, but we could finalize the, um, POS, which is the preliminary official statement, send that off to the printer, um, and, uh, look at possibly just pricing and setting rates. Probably Tuesday of next week and then, you know, closing approximately ten business days after that. So sometime before the end of April, if that's what you choose to do. But once you have the pricing, the rates are all locked in, um, once we go through that process.
And if we feel all right.
Free tomorrow, so I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. And the document is essentially done. It, it's been done. So we just need to cross the Ts, dot the Is, make sure everything's correct and still current.
So for me, knowing that the overall interest is a little lower than what we had projected, that makes me feel better from a general fund standpoint for some of those items that are going to be paid out of debt service. And then the way that we projected the utility increases, water and sewer, that's Jan one of next year, which, you know, continues to give us the balance of the year from a, um, receipt standpoint, which was some of the concern uh, as well. Uh, so for me, I feel, I feel comfortable. Cheryl, Chip?
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving ahead.
Cheryl, is that a blink once for yes? Yeah. It's a thumbs up. All right, we'll take it.
Okay. Yeah. And then to your point, the bulk of it is the water and sewer there. I mean, the small pieces for the Geo side are the, um, plow truck and the, the salt temple. And those have the shortest amortization and the lowest debt service, obviously. So.
I'll just add two cents with that, uh, Ben. I think that's great because I know with a few of these engineering contracts we executed, the, the design, the engineering was included in those, uh, issuances. So I know Dana's cash flowing it through the general engineering budget. Uh, ultimately that'll run out and want to, we will repay ourselves, but, um, we're going to get some larger bills with more of that work being completed.
Okay. I think that was a lot of, you know, those questions were really about, um, how we felt from a budget projection standpoint. So I think that, that helps kind of contextualize what we're looking at. Um, and lend some clarity over how we may, uh, end up here. So, good. Any other questions about, uh, the bonding package then? Dana, Jay, thank you guys very much for taking the time and looking into it and the update and.
Yeah, thank you. I'll come here. We'll, we'll let you.
Uh, all right. Next up here, we have already, already approved CIP projects, current state. Future savings, things like that. Uh, Jim, this is what I was kind of alluding to earlier. And I think, I mean, we have CASN that we're continuing to, uh, work on Route sixty-two. Obviously that is continuing to move. Um, is there anything, uh, any, are there any other timelines? Um, that we should be looking at moving back? Or, you know, in this case, like with sixty-two, we've expanded the hours of operation for the construction. Um, is there anything from a CIP perspective relative to either the receipt that we're expecting from a budget standpoint or from just the, uh, construction, uh, labor timeline?
Of all the projects that we have going on, the only heightened, um, sense I have is the Oregon Street OPWC disbursement. Um, the governor told us on the phone call, they're going to be looking at all those funds. And the fact that they're deferring everybody's payment in July leads me to believe there's going to be even less money coming in from their cash flow perspective. So we don't have the official word that we have that money. We have the unofficial word and, and I probably believe we'll get it. Uh, but there's a little bit of me that worries that, uh, they could yank that. However, um, you know, I think if they do pull funding, it'll be just different until next year. So, um, we'll see what happens, but I think round thirty-five, I think is what we're going to be on in October. That's what's going to take the hit from these deferred payments and, uh, we're in round thirty-four. So I think we'll get our money, but it just, that's the only real, uh, cash flow money thing with any of these projects. That has me a little bit worried.
So with that too, and the conversations that have happened, you know, it sounds like a lot of these conversations about potential projects or any other delays are maybe related to near term. Has there been any conversation about ripple effects, you know, a couple of years out when you're talking about? I'm just throwing out the, uh, Leaky Dell thirty-seven, uh, or the Route sixty-two phase two. You know, it's dependent on some, some of the O dot dollars.
No, I, I think everyone's just trying to figure out what they're going to do tomorrow. Um, I've had no discussions. We have an Elcats meeting next Tuesday. Um, but there's been no future issues like with the sixty-two turn lane or any conversations that, that, those funds are in jeopardy. I just think people are trying to figure out what to do, uh, day to day.
Okay. Any other questions? Current CIP? All right. Uh, the only other thing that's on here then, a potential for reserve fund expenditures be budget stabilization, utility reserves. I, I feel like we kind of talked about already and Dana, correct me if I'm wrong, you feel like we're in a good spot. You know, budget stabilization, we talked about the execution of that toward the balance of the year, depending on what needs to be backfilled, but knowing that as it stands right now, you know, we, we have that to be able to utilize, uh, in some capacity if needed. Um, anything to mention about that?
No, I think that's, that's exactly it. We can, we can monitor our income tax receipts through the, through the rest of the year and see where we are and determine if we need to adjust that ninety thousand dollar transfer and make a decision and go with what we need to do at the time.
All right. And you did, just to, to wrap it up, you, you did have, um, you said one thing that we should be expecting on the twenty-first, that's an additional appropriation?
Right, right. Um, ninety-five hundred dollars for, um, so there was a, a pole over Concord Road and South Main Street that was hit la, or I'm sorry, it was wind damaged last year. It was fixed eventually, but we haven't, um, sorry, Teresa, there's someone outside. Do you see her? She's got a flag. I'm sorry. There's somebody outside holding a flag. Yeah, um, all right, I'm distracted now.
American.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Um, okay, Teresa, I'm here of it.
Good.
Anyway, the, um, the pole that was wind damaged, it was, it was not about a thousand or ten thousand dollars to fix. And we received insurance proceeds for that already, which was received into the general fund in twenty nineteen. But we only now in twenty twenty have the bill for that. So that money, um, should have been appropriated. I forgot about it, didn't think about it, didn't have a note. My mistake. Um, so I'll, I have, we have to reappropriate that in twenty twenty to pay that bill.
It's essentially through, it's not like it's an additional expense because it was the, yeah.
Correct. The other piece is for the, um, HVAC unit that we had replaced at the top of the admin building last month. Um, that was about ten thousand dollars or nine thousand dollars. And I went ahead and paid for, since we didn't have counsel for a while and we, the company was, was, um, asking for payment, you know, ten thousand dollars rightly so. So they, um, wanted to be paid and we didn't have the money. But so I pulled it out of the budget stabilization appropriation that we had, that twenty thousand dollars. And so, um, I have an appropriation request for counsel to approve the, um, the repayment of that. So we can put that back into budget stabilization from general fund. If that makes sense.
It does. Um, I don't know. I don't know if we need that additional appropriation. If we've expended ten of the twenty, you know, until.
Yeah, that's true. You don't need it. I mean, as long as you're okay with it coming out of budget stabilization, we can just keep everything as is.
I'd say leave it as it is and then if, see where we are and if we need to put it back, we can put it back.
Okay, I'm good with that. So I'll adjust the appropriation as it's currently written to only be that pass-through amount for the pole for the ten thousand dollars.
Cheryl's nodding her head, so it seems like she's in agreement as well.
Okay.
Still can't hear you. No. Non-verbal cues though, we're good. It's all good. So, um, yeah, to that point, if we don't have to, you know, move any additional money around or anything like that, I think that's part of the point of why we instituted that, uh, you know, blanket appropriation at a budget stabilization for things like this. So, so you did what you had to do to be able to pay the invoice and ensure that those folks are kept, kept working and they got the money that we said that we would give them. And then if we get to the point where we need additional above and beyond, I think we can probably, probably look at it at that point. So.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Is there anything else that we should be looking at or that has come up? Jim has raised his hand.
Yeah, I've been, um, just putting it out there. I've been working with, uh, Chief Haroon. We're looking at that CAD upgrade as well. Um, Chief is working at, or working to come up with those numbers as well as, um, I took a look at his old, what I'll call the old police chief cruiser. Uh, and we all know what that is like. So I've asked Chief as well to get cost estimates on a new police, uh, chief cruiser, which isn't a full outfit, but is, uh, you know, lights, lights and everything we need, uh, for that, uh, as Chief will be driving that car back and forth. Um, Chief, I don't know if you wanted to expand on any of those two items or not?
Yeah, sure. That's great. And thank you for giving the opportunity to do that. Um, so basically what we're doing is we're looking into a new CAD. And with the new CAD, basically what that is, is it's the computer aided dispatching. And it's a means for us, uh, basically kind of like streamline stuff. And for me, it's a, it's a great way to look at data as well to make the, uh, the officers more efficient. And for the public to gather information better and because it puts it in electronic form. Um, right now, I, I would say that we're very antiquated. It seems like we haven't really moved, um, in, in means of technology at the department for, for some time now. So in, in my opinion, we have a lot of catching up to do. So I've recently reached out to, uh, Tom, um, a representative at, uh, at one of the CAD systems. Um, and give me just one second. The CAD system's name is New World. And I've been working with Tom Miller now. Currently, uh, most of the agencies within Lickie County currently uses CAD system. So Newark uses it, uh, the county uses it. Um, Heath is going to be using it. Granville uses it, Tascal uses it. And then Hebron is looking at using it. Um, and then I too am also looking at using it as well as I reached out to the chief of Buckeye Lake today. Although I don't feel that they're going to have the budgets or rather have, they do have the budget constraints, which might not allow them to get into it. So I would, basically we're doing everything by paper and pencil. So when, um, I've really kind of taken the time to sit down with each individual, uh, employee at the police department. And I've been taking about an hour and a half to interview, interview them, if you will, um, about, you know, the experiences that they've had here and what the problems and challenges they're currently having and what we can do in order to make the department better as we move forward. So basically one of the things that they come up with is, uh, paperwork. Um, and these employers are saying that it's taken them about two hours to complete a, a traffic report. Because what they had to do is they had to handwrite, uh, a traffic report out. So they put the name, telephone number, address, van, uh, make motor, make model, color of the vehicle, um, all that stuff into a physical report. They had to hand draw a diagram. And then what ends up happening is we copy that after it's been approved, approved, and then we submit it to the state of Ohio, which in itself is very tedious. Now, what I would love to do is I'd, I'd love to come up, um, Ben and members of the council, as well as Jim and the rest administration with some data that says like, hey, this is how much time that we're spending doing this, but I'll be honest with you. I don't have any data to go on, so I have no idea how long it's, I'm taking officers to actually do paper reports. Now, if I had a CAD system, I'd be able to figure out exactly how long they're taking to do the reports. And I'd be able to break it down into what I would consider like an allocated time that an officer spends doing tasks. Um, so with CAD, I can take snapshots like that. Like if, uh, the mayor has an expectation that officers are to patrol neighborhoods for thirty-five minutes. Um, with CAD, I can determine if we're actually meeting, meeting those metrics or not. Um, however, I can't unless I'm going through, uh, black and white, you know, handwritten logs, um, and what may have it. So working with the representative at New World, he hasn't given me an estimate on what the CAD system would cost. If I honestly had to guess, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of, uh, I would say twenty thousand dollars. Now, what I do know is that the EMA has recently paid eight hundred thousand dollars, um, for the licensure, licensure and the ability to use this program. And what's going to be able to happen is that we're going to be able to piggyback off them. And if we have other organizations being us, Hebron and Heath, uh, police department, um, do the training at the same time, it might be able to cut down on some of those costs because we're going to kind of unite as a different departments in order to do the training in one big lump sum. So I do have a, a meeting coming up with New World where they're actually going to do a demo and of the actual software. And to give you an example of how, how much more user intuitive it's going to be, if an officer, like I said, is running a license at the scene, what they're going to do is they're going to run that license. Um, they're going to figure out if the person's out or not, and then they're going to handwrite all that data. And with the new system, they'll just simply run the license through dispatch. And once they do that, it will auto-populate all of the information into the crash report. So you can see how much time that that's going to save. In addition to that, they're going to use almost like a, uh, an easy draw program where they're going to be able to use, uh, templates. Um, and then once we build a, a, a database of templates up, it's going to be very easy for the officers to simply grab a template of an intersection, put that into the drawing and then add units of being the vehicles that were involved into it. So that's kind of where I, I stood as far as like the CAD system and I haven't really touched on a patrol, uh, vehicle at this point. But I wanted to get, uh, any questions answered by CAD if you guys have them.
Is, uh, is this what the count, this is not what the county currently uses in the nine-one-one center, correct?
It, it will be. Yes. So they just launched it, I believe yesterday or the day before, they just launched this new world. Um, and I did get the opportunity to go to, uh, the EMA and, and view that new, the nine-one-one super center that they have out there. And, and I tell you, it is, it's nothing short of amazing. It's a, it's, it's beautiful. I mean, it's, it's top notch. They spared no expense doing it.
All right, very good. So what's I sent it out? That's great.
So I just wanted to tell the chief to keep exploring the, uh, new world thing and, uh, you know, I think in the, in the long run, it'll probably save us some money, but you know, we gotta figure out, you know, what it's going to cost us and, and then figure out where to get the money.
Yeah, I think in the, in the right along with the officers, especially most recently too, talking about, you know, how much time it takes to manually, you know, do a lot of those reports, especially if we're looking at, say, the false alarm ordinances and safety and service. Right. Maximizing officer efficiency and, and things of that nature. Um, having some kind of opportunity to continue to bring efficiencies to departments only going to help.
And, and those two things that I touched on, the CAD and the vehicle are, you know, their estimates. I've shared that with, with Chief, you know, we got to take it to the finance committee and all through those, uh, sources. So, um, but there's a place to start and that's through the finance committee.
Right. And then I'm just kind of moving on to the vehicle. And again, that CAD will also help with, um, I'm a very analytical person and I'm very data driven. So it's going to help me kind of, uh, build a matrix on what my expectations are going to be out of the officers as well as what your expectations are going to be. So it's gonna help me kind of build matrix on what my expectations are gonna be out of the officers as well as what your expectations are gonna be out of the department. And then moving forward to the patrol vehicle. Currently, right now, I'm using one of the in fleet patrol vehicles. I have worked with the village manager. To take the old Crown Victoria and then move that into rotation at other areas within the. Within the village. And it is a pretty old car. I don't, it must be like a two thousand and ten or something like that. And it is in pretty rough shape. So I would like to work towards getting a new patrol vehicle, one of the newer ones that we have now. However, in order to cut down on cost. The vehicle will not be outfitted with the most common patrol items like a laptop, radar, camera, gun mounts and stuff like that. It's gonna be as bare bone as I possibly make it. However, I will put a cage in there for prisoners because I feel that it's still important that if I need to do prisoner transports. Or assist with any type of arrest, what may have it, that I do have a marked patrol car that I am able to put a prisoner back. In addition to that, there'll be a. Installation of a drawer system back there and that's gonna be for command type items. If there was a critical incident where we needed to have. More drawers and systems for, you know, basically a trunk type command center until we're able to set up a real command center as a situation would have unfold. I'm also considering maybe going to like a classic black and white look as far as the police cruisers go to enhance visibility. I think that those type of vehicles. Can be seen from a much further distance and recognize that they're actually police officers as opposed to the all-white ones that we have now. And then the car. Should it be obtained, will be kept in principal condition. Pristine because I foresee using the vehicle to lead parades as well as it's gonna be primary displayed in a lot of other major events. And if. You know, in the parades, you know, either the city manager could ride with me or the mayor could ride with me as well.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think we've talked about the need to obviously update the fleet and. The vehicle that, that the black cruiser that's out there is. Well, well worn in. So at the very least entertaining, any potential updates to that, I think is well worth it. I think the outfits that you talked about too makes sense for what you would ultimately use it for. So, yeah, to that point, I'd say continue to walk down that path to see. What we can review in finance.
Okay.
Chip, did you have something?
No, I'm just gonna say, have we received the other new vehicle yet?
Alright, so when it comes to the vehicle, Ford is currently closed. So I'm looking at a minimum of six monthly time on it. So for something that we started to work on, I mean, honestly, I don't think that I'd get the vehicle.
Oh, this is on, this is on the new one you're talking about. I was talking about the ones we already ordered and hadn't arrived yet.
Alright, so I am.
We get both of them?
Yeah, so I am pleased to say that some of the vehicles have had some problems with it in reference to the vendor that we've been using, which I'm not really crazy about that vendor and plan on using a different vendor. That might save us money. But I am proud to say that as of today, we do have five operational police cruisers within the fleet right now. So all of them are up and working.
Okay, great.
That's good news. A year and a half to get. Good, that's good to know, good to know. Okay, thank you, Chief. Welcome to the village, by the way.
Thank you. It's been kind of a baptism by fire type thing. So, but you know, in a way, I wouldn't have in any other way, you know, I welcome challenge. So I say it's like, it's a tough right now, but bring it on.
Hey, when you come in, when it's, you know, difficult, it makes you kind of appreciate some of the downtime too.
Absolutely. And I really thank the opportunity for the position to serve the community of Johnstown.
Oh, we're excited to have you here. So I think those are all the items on the agenda. I wanted to circle back just on a couple of things, but didn't know if Chip, Cheryl. Do you guys had any questions or anything like that? Or any comments before we kind of wrap it up?
No, I'm fine.
Nope, Cheryl's good. Staff, any, Jim?
Yeah, is there anything specific for the twenty-first? I know, obviously, we have email to get us through the time, but. Are you looking for any of these items that were on the agenda in more detail? Or are we just continuing to monitor for you guys?
That's, and that's a good question. That's kind of what I was gonna circle around to is I think when, at least from the notes that I'm taking. And from what we're looking at, some of the things just to, to pay attention to and maybe, you know, and by the twenty-first. Circling back to see if there's any, any updated numbers based off of the, you know, at that point, previous. Twelve days of data, if we think that based off of that, any other decisions that come down from the governor or any other. Any other governmental directives about length of time for these, if that's gonna affect any of the projections that we talked through today. Continuing to keep an eye on how the gas tax is actualizing, which is gonna really affect, you know, the street department. Receipts. And then how, you know, those income tax receipt projections are actualizing against the. Thirty percent that Dana has built in there for kind of adjusting down to the one point eight. And then again, for me, the, the water and sewer receipts, how those are actualizing relative to what, you know, normal state. Actually has us in, you know, Jack's thirty, thirty-five percent shut offs is pretty normal for this last period of time. You know, expect, you know, the next snapshot. What is the next shut off period, Jack? You're muted, Jack. You're muted.
We should be around, around the twentieth.
Okay, so by the twenty-first, we should kind of be able to understand if we've seen a spike or if it's kind of actualizing the way that we expected it.
Yeah, we'll see if there's gonna be a spike. Probably that normal thirty to thirty-five group. Will be in their second month of non-pay. Jim and I have discussed, you know, a plan of how we're gonna try to get that caught up. After six months, because it's gonna be a difficult thing, because if you can't pay sixty dollars a month and you're on the shut off. How are you gonna pay the, the sixty dollars plus once December hits? And then the shut off day in December is December seventeenth. As we plotted it out, of course, that's right before Christmas, so.
I have the fifteenth.
Excuse me?
I have the fifteenth.
Okay, well, I could be two days off, but my gear on that was. We waited clear through till December to do shut offs. Are we gonna shut off right before Christmas? Talked about current bill. Oh, plus thirty percent, but if you owe six hundred dollars and you can't pay sixty a month, and I'm a guy that believes in keeping up, you guys know that, but. You know, if they pay sixty plus two hundred plus. Right at Christmas, are we really gonna do that? Or do we wanna just wait and see?
Wait and see.
But I do view it as a problem, because if we go through and start terminating people right then, that. Cruel and unusual, I guess they might say.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
I just think we gotta keep track of it all the way through and see where we are.
Yeah.
And deal with them as, you know, as individuals. And if we get somebody in a bad scene, we'll try to figure out a way to help.
To get it. You got it like that versus just the bulk mass. It does make for work. In office, you know, to say, instead of sending a mass out and say, okay, we're not gonna do this or do that. But I think we have more power, more leverage, you know, if we talk one-on-one and say, you know, we do need you to catch up. We do need to start this plan. And some people can do more than others, yeah, in the catch-up world. I would think.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, my point in calling out is just to keep in track of what's actualizing relative to our expectations. The projections that we've had. If this is the new snapshot of what we could expect, status quo, December thirty-first at the end of the year. Then how, you know, how can we continue to update on how things are actually playing out? So if we need to. Shift course based off of a particular trend that we can do that in the short term or the long term. But, yeah, the last thing I wanna see is anybody's water gets shut off. You know, right before Christmas or, or period, really for that matter. And to your point, Jack, if you can't, if you can't do a hundred bucks or sixty bucks, then your expectation for three, four, five. Just continues to deplete the higher you go. So being able to work with people is vitally important and keeping that in-house is, is just as important.
But I think we'll just have Laura run a continual on our arrears just to see. How it grows, although it may be that same thirty-five. People, but we'll just, we'll just see what that number grows to.
I guess just call out if there's a concern. Just to make everybody aware. Anybody have anything else? Cheryl?
Nope, I'm, I'm fine.
Here, okay. Jim, Jim? Okay. Well, appreciate everybody making the time to get together to talk. We're ending early for a finance meeting, which is great.
I move to adjourn.
Chip moves to adjourn. I'll go ahead and second that. Cheryl, raise your hand. Cheryl, agree. So we'll go ahead and adjourn. But with that, thanks, everybody for making the time. Thanks. All the directors for taking the time to go through all the numbers. Joey, Dana, for looking at the bonding information and Chief, any other information that. You would have to update by the twenty-first for that regularly scheduled finance meeting at five, we can, we can talk through that too and understand how we can. Look at maybe plugging that in based off of what you have to share.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Alright, guys.
Thank you all.
Happy Easter, everybody.
Happy Easter.
Thank you.